Good afternoon. The meeting will now come to order. Hello, I am Ken Kyler, President of the Board of Education. I would like to welcome you to the August 17, 2022 Board Meeting. In keeping with the Board's commitment to open communication with the community, this meeting is being streamed live on CCPS website and broadcast live on Channel 21. We are also recording this meeting so that it can be accessed on demand on our website and broadcast throughout the month on Channel 21. Citizen participation will be held at approximately 5:15 and then again later in the meeting as needed. Speakers will be directed into the boardroom if needed from the building lobby and are allotted three minutes to address the Board. As a reminder, please silence all cell phones and other devices. Also, Board members, please turn off your microphones when you are not speaking. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Could I have a motion for the approval of the minutes from the July 21st open meeting?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Man, no discussion. All the... All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Public comments?
To have an orally presentation of comments by the public, the following guidelines apply. Speakers will be allowed to address the Board for the allotted three minutes. Only those speakers that have completed the blue card in its entirety will be chosen to address the Board. Citizens not appearing in person for public comment can write to the Board through mail or U.S. mail. Citizen participation is not intended to be a question-answer session. However, citizens have specific questions, the superintendent will assign a staff member to make contact during the Board meeting to arrange a time to respond to questions. The superintendent and the Board reserve the right to correct misinformation presented as factual after the conclusion of the citizen participation period. Statements to the Board should relate to a recent agenda item, an agenda item that is expected to appear in the future, or a matter of general policy over which the Board has authority. Personnel matters, pending appeals, the actions or statements of individual staff, or items related to employee negotiations are not appropriate topics and may not be discussed. It is the intent of the Board to allow all citizens an opportunity to speak. Therefore, the Board has scheduled time on the agenda for citizen participation to approximately at 5:15. There is an opportunity for an additional citizen participation later in the meeting as we get to it on the agenda. The Board reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on a particular topic so that all topics may be addressed. If 30 minutes have passed and there are citizens who have not addressed the Board, additional time may be allotted later in the meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes or less. All comments should be directed to the Board members at the dais. Citizens may only address the Board with their individual comments. Citizens may not stand in for another person or group and read their comments. When the allotted time expires, the speaker is permitted to complete a sentence. Citizens may leave any handouts for Board members on the table in the back of the boardroom. Please do not approach the dais. Additionally, the public may not display signs or posters during the Board meeting. In lieu of signs, or if you are unable to complete your comments in the allotted time, individuals are encouraged to submit remarks to the Board in writing. Those seated in the audience are asked to be respectful of the speaker and refrain from commenting to the speaker or Board members. The first card I have is for Jen Greenwood.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm here to talk about the weighting of summative and formative assessments and how it's negatively impacting our children. I'm sure it's not been thought of in this way that I'm going to describe, and my hope is to bring attention to the problem so that it can be corrected. My name is Jen Greenwood. I have two children in CCPS. I'm a former high school teacher. I hold a master's degree in curriculum and instruction. I currently teach and coordinate math courses at Carroll Community College. The weighting of our formative and summative assessments is much different than those of surrounding counties. CCPS honors courses are typically weighted as 80% to 85% summative and only 15% to 20% formative. My husband teaches standard through AP courses in a Baltimore County high school. The guidance he's been provided from his county is a 50% split even for his college-level AP classes. The same goes for my sister-in-law in Howard County and a friend in Anarundel County. I agree with holding students to a high standard, but it's not appropriate for CCPS to implement such a drastically different policy than those around us. I spoke with a leader in CCPS and asked how the weighting was determined. I was told that several teachers met in a room and hashed out that the policies of other counties were not a consideration and that the standard is intended to align with college practices. But our children are not college students, and this is a higher standard to which I hold my college students. I value the process of learning. In the courses that I teach, tests make up about 60% of their grade. The rest of their grade is made up of assignments that allow for communication with their instructor, drafts, revision, reflection, and the use of resources before the final product is submitted. I've yet to see a single project-based assessment in my children's math courses. This means that nearly all of a student's grade is coming from what the student produces on a test or a quiz. Tests and quizzes completed in a one-shot timed setting serve a purpose, but there are many outside factors that can impact performance that are not necessarily things a student can control, such as sleep, nutrition, and home life. When students progress out of the educational system and into the workplace, there will be very few situations in which they will be asked to complete a timed task without resources and without the opportunity to review, revise, receive feedback, and edit the final product. By placing such a high priority on summative assessments, you're sending the message that you do not value the process of education, the importance of a draft or meeting with teachers, the importance of learning how to appropriately use resources, and trying a different strategy when the one you tried didn't work out. These are skills that students will use when they leave the classroom. I went through my daughter's quarter grades last year and calculated what they would have been if she were weighted on a 50% summative-formative scale. In some situations, her quarter grade would have been one letter higher. She's a very good student, so she didn't have far to go, but I imagine this impacts other students more than it does her. Our children are competing for the same scholarships and college admissions as those in nearby counties. It would be more likely for my daughter to maintain her Carson Scholar status if she were to attend a school in a different county. It would also be more likely that she would receive other awards and competitive scholarships or be admitted into a college, choice college. Due to the negative impact of the current weighting policy and having on our students, I ask that the weighting of formative and summative assessments be immediately corrected to an additional 50% weighting to show that you value the process of learning and allow our students to be on equal ground with students in surrounding counties when competing for scholarships, awards, and college admission. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will leave this here.
Thank you. Next speaker is Belinda Lawson.
First, I want to say I am extremely proud of this Board of Education. You've shown professionalism, integrity, and loyalty to your community, and that's exactly why you were elected. Thank you. My concerns are with the rogue individuals in your system that have taken it upon themselves to put education aside and proceed with utilizing progressive materials that is introducing young children to inappropriate ideologies that are not only dangerous, but they hurt children more than help. It mobilizes them against their family, their country, and our principles. Everyone doesn't have to be the same, but every child has the right to a public education free of radicalized lesson plans based on theories not fact. Like the idea that men are capable of birthing a child. The idea that anyone can be a woman without a female reproductive system goes against science itself. You're supposed to be teaching science, not creating your own fantasy land. It's insulting, and it raises some very serious questions about the state of our public education. I don't care what MSD is pushing down the throats of teachers. If the requirement is now to teach children they live in a fantasy land of gargoyles and yellow brick roads where you can decide what gender you are despite acknowledging biological scientific truths, then why are we still calling this the public education system? May I remind everyone, this is not Hollywood. This is not real. This is real life, and I'm under the impression that educators are preparing the children for just that. How is it possible to teach proper English in one class, go into another that encourages pronoun usage, and then fail your English test because you're not using the proper pronoun usage? What kind of education is this? I can't even imagine the amount of confusion young children are experiencing, the ones that are too young to care about the latest trends or openly discussing sexuality. To intentionally confuse a child on this level in some branches of government used to be considered a crime. It's wrong, and your ethical standards should tell you that. My family feels lucky. We are not heading into a system of extreme radicalization here in Carroll. I am hoping this county elects future Board members that do care more about the quality of education than the political agendas of our troubled leaders. There's only one word for a system that intentionally lowers the standards for particular groups of people to essentially dumb down under a pretense of equity. Please don't make me use this word when describing this beautiful community and county that I have come to love so much in the 23 years I've been here. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last speaker is Greg Dunkelberger.
All right. My name is Craig Dunkelberger. I'm a former Carroll County employee, and I'm here to speak tonight about LGBT rights and your recent decision to ban the flag. So I've come to Board meetings tonight to speak to you all tonight on a topic that might cause you great discomfort and fright. I'm not here to talk about creepy spiders or slithery snakes or about the feeling you get when making some mistakes. I'm here tonight to talk to you all about a fear that is real, and overcoming this fear starts with the permission to feel. All discomfort starts on the very edge of our comfort zone. And don't worry, this feeling is common. You're not alone. Homophobia is the fear of sameness and comes from within. This might baffle your mind just a bit, so let us dive right in. You aren't afraid of gay people, you're afraid you are too. Banning pride flags make it harder for some to live their true. If you aren't gay, this does not affect you in the very least. You're in the majority, and your population is increased. In the majority, you never have to tell people you're straight. Discrimination is acting on stereotypes and ideas you formulate. Look at your fingerprint. It's unique to each one of you. This is like many other things in life, like your point of view. Each one of us is different and unique in our own special way. You can be heterosexual, bisexual, transgender, lesbian, or gay. Let us start with a rainbow. What on earth could that beauty lack? But putting it on an LGBTQ pride flag might cause a panic attack. It's true, being lesbian, gay, bi, or transgender is outside the norm, but our true sexuality and gender identity are nothing to conform. Our sexuality and gender are found inside our very own DNA, unchangeable, even banning a pride flag will not make it go away. Banning a pride flag will not make the way you think, change the way you think or feel. You're just drawing attention to your own homophobia in the reveal. The only way to overcome fear is to show courage in what you face. Nobody likes being uncomfortable. This isn't a feeling that we embrace. Let's end homophobia by putting LGBTQ pride flags back where they belong, because in the end, tolerance and acceptance will make us all strong. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
I just wanted, Mr. Dunkelberger, I just did want to correct one thing. We did not ban the pride flag.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Employee groups.
Good evening, Superintendent McCabe, members of the Board of Education. I am Cindy Porter, President of CASE, representing assistants, clericals, and LPNs throughout Carroll County Public Schools. As the days of summer wind down and the beginning of the 2022-2023 school year looms just around the corner, I would like to take this opportunity to recognize the efforts of the 12-month clerical members of our bargaining unit, who are not only many times the first staff, parents and visitors to our school buildings come in contact with year-round, but who also work tirelessly in coordination with their administrators and other building staff during the summer to have everything ready for staff and students to return each fall. I would also like to recognize our 10-month employees who volunteered to work over the summer for their dedication to help students with the academic skills they need to keep moving forward. Many members of our bargaining unit work more than one job to make ends meet, and I hope that they, along with the rest of the CASE bargaining unit members, have been able to find some time for rest and rejuvenation this summer. No matter the circumstance, our education support professionals stand ready, as always, to work with the bargaining unit members of CCEA to help our students gain the necessary academic and social skills they will need to succeed in the 21st century workforce that lays waiting for them beyond their formal education. Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent McCabe, Board members. I'm Celeste Jordan, President of CCEA. Tomorrow is new teacher orientation, and CCA is looking forward to working with the new hires. Anyone who has watched or read the news lately has heard about the educator shortages. Teresa McCullough talked about this during her term as president. If the graphic that Tim Tooten shared on WBAL is accurate, Carroll only has seven vacancies while neighboring Baltimore has 400. And people may think, oh, good, the educator shortage is not affecting us. Vacancies only tell part of the story. We must ask, how many qualified educators are we hiring? How many people are we hiring with no teaching certificate and CCPS is granting them a conditional teaching certificate? Hiring people with degrees but no teaching certificate is not new. Back in 1995, I was hired by a private high school with my master's in math, and I used those three years to earn the teaching certificate before I could teach at a public school. Notice I said "private" school. Back in 1995, a public school would not hire me without a teaching certificate. Now MSD has granted those already teaching with a conditional certificate a waiver and given them two extra years to earn their certificate. MSD did this so that schools would not lose those people hired in the last few years. The waiver is a short-term solution, and is my sincere hope that all our conditionally certified educators have great success this year, and it's just the beginning of a long career. This also affects our CASE bargaining unit, because I can tell you, last year at the new hire, I ran into four IAs who worked in my building who had become teachers, which then hurts CASE. Tomorrow, I will express my hope to all the new hires that they have a successful year and a long career in Carroll County Public Schools. What I won't say is something I heard in a meeting yesterday. I heard that the Human Resources Department in Howard County loves to see applicants from Carroll County because they're already trained, and it saves them time and money. CCA would also like to take a chance to thank all the support staff who have worked these past few months to get the school buildings ready for students and staff. I know there are many building maintenance people right now who are sick of teacher emails asking if the floor wax is dry so that they can get into their classroom and get ready. I'm going to give a shout out to the clerical, because as they prepare and get all the handouts and everything else ready, in two weeks, people are going to come up to them and ask them how they are, and then immediately say, hey, do you know where I find? And then fill in the blank there. So apologies to the clerical right now. To my fellow educators, as you prepare for the new school year, please take care of yourself and set your boundaries right now between work and home so that we can all make it through the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other employee groups?
Do we have student?
No, there was no SGA report tonight, correct?
Correct. I didn't see anything.
Okay. Just making sure.
Emily, did we have an SGA report?
Not tonight.
I will cover it in my board. Thank you.
She says she'll do the report.
She'll do it. She'll cover it later.
Oh, okay. Board member activities and correspondence. Dr. Dorsey, can we start with you and come this way?
You certainly may, and mine is probably the shortest that it's ever been. I've only had one activity, and that was my participation in MAB's Conference Program Committee meeting. During our time together, we were finalizing plans for our upcoming annual conference. And I'll put in a plug again to my fellow Board members that if you can spare some time to attend our conference, it would be greatly appreciated. I think we've done a great job with pulling together some hot topics and some workshop sessions that all of our state Board members or members of the local boards throughout the state can really glean some information from. And I'm very grateful to Superintendent McCabe and Mrs. Gramata and some of our staff here who are planning to share the Sources of Strength program here from Carroll County as a part of one of the Hot Topics sessions. So again, we're looking forward to the upcoming conference in October, and that was basically my only school-related activity for the month. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Herbert?
I have no activities that pertain to the Board, but we were busy. And I do want to wish Ms. McCabe and everyone, teachers, custodians, secretaries, everyone, to have a great year and best of luck, and always put your best foot forward. And children, it's almost here.
And I don't have much either, and the only thing I really had directly related was the agenda meeting, but I just would like to mention again the Carroll County 4H Fair. I saw CCA bought a cake.
We found one cheap enough finally.
And it's just great to see the families and students and SROs and the police presence there, and the same thing with the carnivals. It's to see the volunteers out there making money and pushing things. I just want to compliment everyone on that. And again, like Ms. Herbert, I want to wish everybody a good start to schools. As both employee group says and as our superintendent has told us, a lot of that work's been going on for months. It's not just starting, but for the kids, it's just starting. And I'm crossing my fingers, let's have a normal year.
You just jinxed us. Thanks.
Okay, so July 29 through August 6 was the Carroll County 4H and FFA Fair. Congratulations to all the 4Hers and the FFA members that participated in the 150th fair activities. Thank you to CCEA for purchasing a cake. That was good to see, you know, a lot of people there participating in that. The cake auction set a new record this year for $20,000 for a cake, so I'd like to congratulate the maker of that cake. That was her first time, and there were several businesses that went in on that. The livestock auction was a huge success, with there were 315 animals that were in the livestock auction. Seeing all the new 4Hers that are clovers and those that are, this is their last year. Each of them showed their best work, their best projects, whether it be art, photography, crafts, and raising their animals. And a lot of those crafts, those students, you know, they make in the schools. So you see like the arts room members, and you see the pottery, and you see, you know, whether it's writing and public speaking, all those things, they learned in our schools. They just put everything that they have into them. So I'm so thankful for our school system also, in a sense, contributing to those items that are entered. Thank you to all the parents that support their children in the week-long with driving back and forth from home to the fair. I myself was in tent city quite a bit, being there early until late. And all the volunteers that worked long hours in the heat and all that came out and supported the fair. So again, it is appreciative. And now it's on to the state fair and to Timonium, so that kicks off here in a couple of more days. As the summer is winding down and back-to-school orientations are starting, please ask your child's teacher what you can do to help them. Start the line of communication with your child's teacher. Ask the child's teacher if there's anything they need for their classroom, whether it's a gift card to make purchases, appropriate snacks or tissues for the classroom. And make sure that your child's teacher knows that they can contact you anytime with any concerns, and that you, as a parent, will communicate any concerns with the teacher as well. I do want to congratulate all of our students that made their high school sport teams with the tryouts. Now the games are getting ready to gear up. And those of you didn't make it, you know what to do to work harder to get and try next time. So never, never stop. Just keep going. For my family and I, we've been doing a few college visits with my oldest that'll be a senior this year. While it's exciting, I'm nervous at the same time. This year is going to fly, go by in a flash. We have one more college visit tomorrow, and then it's on to scholarship applications, finish back-to-school shopping, and maybe squeeze in one more day trip here and there, whether it be Hershey Park or somewhere else. I don't know yet. But before, you know, everything starts for September 6 for the first day. The summer did seem to fly by really quick. It really did. But I hope everyone made the best of it. You know, Carroll Observer has put out, they're looking for high school students to help them out with taking pictures at local high school games, give them kind of like the rundown of scores. So make sure you reach out to the Carroll Observer to see, you know, how you can help with that. And on another note, August 31 is International Overdose Awareness Day, and September is National Recovery Month. International Overdose Awareness Day aims to honor the lives, those that have lost to overdose, and to reduce the stigma associated with the substance-related passing. Get naloxone trained. It's free to do. Contact the Health Department. Also, reach out to your local first responders, the different fire departments. You know, I'm glad that we were able to get naloxone training in our high schools, and I want to make sure that still continues and eventually see about getting it into our middle schools. But it is so important. So, you know, just think of those that have lost their lives, because many, many, many times, it is no fault of their own. It is something else that took them down that path. So we just keep those in the back of our minds and pray for them and help those that are going forward to better themselves. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Sivigna?
I just wanted to very quickly say congratulations to all the student athletes in the tryouts that happened over the last couple of weeks. It was pretty exciting and fun to see. As you're driving around the county, there were lots of kids and coaches out on the fields and in the gyms doing strengthening and conditioning and tryouts, and it was starting to get that renewed excitement about the upcoming fall sports. So congratulations to all the student athletes who made their teams. Great job. And good luck to all of our students for the opening. Bring your A-game this year. We're really going to try to make sure that we address any of the learning loss that hasn't been addressed thus far through COVID, that we've got to... I feel that we're very prepared. You know, we're in good shape from a hiring perspective to start the year. You know, we're in good shape from a hiring perspective to start the year due to the good efforts of the folks in our central office, so thanks for all the efforts behind that, and good luck to all the teachers. Thank you for everything that you do and all the hard work that you're gonna be putting in to welcome our students in just a couple of short weeks. So thank you.
Okay. Ms. Tedeschi?
On July 26th, Carroll County Student Government Association began our summer meeting planning, so we have had sequential meetings where we have sworn in our new officers for this upcoming year as well as sworn in our staff members. So congratulations to all the new officers and staff. We know you'll do amazing, and we're really excited to work with you. Additionally, we have planned our theme for the year and how we're going to rebuild the student government within our school system as well as the student voice and the involvement by reconnecting with schools that we have been losing touch with but connecting back to those and coming all together for hopefully in-person events. On August 2nd through the 4th, I attended the Maryland Association of Student Council's Advance with other CCSDA members where I became workshop certified as well as planned the Fall Leadership Conference where we host workshops to educate students on mental health, student advocacy, and government. Additionally, we had the August Exec Board Meeting for MASCE where we shared reports with other student members on the Boards of Education, student representatives on the Board of Education, presidents, vice presidents, and other regional representatives from across the state, so we found out what other students are working on currently and where their advocacy is laying. And lastly, on August 4th, I attended the MAB Student New Member Orientation where I met the other student members on the Board of Education across the state, and it was a pleasure to attend that and understand further the policy and regulations that we work within as a Board of Education so I can fulfill my duties as best as possible. And lastly, I would like to congratulate all of the students as we head forward to this year. I know seniors, we start college applications on August 1st for many of us as well as those students pursuing military recruitment and other job opportunities. I know you seniors will go out and do amazing things, so I'm very proud of you. And good luck to the best, to all of our students. I know we will have an amazing year, and thank you to all CCPS staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent's report. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I know we're gonna do this, but I did forget to say one thing. Mr. Bill Van De Griff is sitting there, and he is the new supervisor, phys ed, and it dates me because he was my student teacher 20 years ago, and I took ill and he ended up substituting for me the rest of the semester, but I am so glad to see him here tonight in a new role, and best of luck. And I will tell you, those phys ed teachers are a bunch of tough nuts in professional development because, let me tell you, they're not worried about professional development those first couple of days, they're worried about what's going on in their sports teams and athletics. So I just wanna give you that little bit of information, they are tough, but I know you'll do a great job, and congratulations.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Herbert. Superintendent's report.
I'd like to begin by congratulating our high school students who were recognized in this year's College Board AP program. Every year, college board recognizes high school students who have demonstrated outstanding college-level achievement through their performance on multiple advanced placement exams and in AP programs. More than 400 students received recognition as AP scholars and/or were awarded AP Seminar and Research Certificates, AP Capstone Diplomas, and AP Certificates or Diplomas. Congratulations to all of these students for their outstanding accomplishments. Also, four rising eighth graders from Sykesville Middle School presented at the Center for Transformative Teaching and Learning Academy. Congratulations to Aiden Burkhouse, Macy Hennessy, Elia Miller, and Leah Shomer, who created virtual presentations called Student Voices and shared their insights on how they learn with educators from around the world. And finally, we are looking forward to welcoming approximately 160 new teachers to our school system as we begin new teacher orientation tomorrow morning. Whether they are just beginning their teaching careers or coming to us from another system, it is always exciting to meet our new teachers who are full of enthusiasm and anticipation. We are very happy to have them join us as we begin the new school year.
Thank you. There are no presentations on the agenda tonight. We do have several reports on different councils and committees. The first report is Carroll County Teacher Advisory Council. Ms. McCabe?
So the first eight reports are all related tonight. Under the Board Policy and Regulations for Board Appointed Committees, in August, we bring both the topics for each committee for the upcoming year, and then later in the agenda, you will approve the membership for each council for next school year. So under Reports, we have the, we have staff liaisons here who can answer any questions or comments about the action plans for any of the councils, but we'll take the first eight as a group.
Board members, any questions?
So we're just opening it up to questions on any of the first eight?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Mr. Kyler, I did have just a general question. I know that we had said, the topics that are typically brought forth for most of these groups, they tend to be very consistent from year to year, and I guess I would be curious to know if any of these groups are looking, we know that the CAC Committee is usually looking for very specific guidance and topics from the Board. Are any of these other groups looking for specific topics or items from the Board that we would be interested in addressing through their groups? Or are they content with, you know, the topics that they've identified as the key ones?
Right. From what I've heard from staff, all of our councils are comfortable with the topics and their action plans for the school year. The only one still looking for Board input is the Community Advisory Council.
Okay.
And we have that later on our agenda.
Right. Okay.
Any other questions, concerns, or some of the board members are on some of the committees? Anything you wanna say about the committee you're on, or we're happy with these? Dr. Dorsey?
Yes, I'd like to look at the Carroll County Curriculum Council. Again, I think we've done a great job with having different topics and a lot of rich discussions. One thing I'm wondering if we can add in, I know we have the consideration of instructional materials, and I know the supervisors do a great job of sharing the instructional materials that they would like to see us adopt. Once the committee members have a chance to review those documents, sometimes there are questions that they fill out on their forms, but it's like we never come back as a group to sort of address those questions or to look at any of the concerns as a group that some of the members have. So I don't know whether there's a way to build in any time for, once we've had a chance to review the materials as curriculum council members, whether we can come back and say, okay, you know, here's how people have responded to these items.
Absolutely. I wonder if we actually start November 18th off? So, you know, we've had some questions and, like you said, review. Maybe we start with an overview of what last year was like, what were some of the questions, some of the things, so, you know, we kinda, each year that would then allow us to build upon what we looked at the following year.
Okay, but for the year that we look at the materials, like, for example, the materials that we look at this year to recommend for adoption next year, once we've had a chance to review the materials, I'm wondering if we could just have some built-in time to have a discussion on some of the concerns that might be raised or whatever.
Absolutely. We could look at adding another date. Usually, they're brought to the Board for approval. At that point, they would be approved, but we could still maybe add a date that, as a council, that we could come back to, you know, look at questions and discuss concerns. Are you looking at prior to it coming to Board for approval?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, because by the time it gets to the Board, the questions and the concerns that are raised are shared with us as Board members, but really, they haven't been addressed as a part of the council.
Yeah, and I, yeah, I think, Dr. Dorsey, even the last couple of years, we've asked questions at that meeting because there's like votes on certain things, but we don't really know if you guys resolved it. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, we haven't taken the opportunity to really have a discussion as a group about some of the questions and concerns that are raised.
Absolutely. So maybe what we could do is still meet on our May 12th, but then maybe a week or two later, develop another meeting right before, hopefully, the Board meeting, that we could look at those questions and then, you know, discuss them as a council. So I'll look at the schedule and add another date, you know, so that we could look at...
Okay, and I'm not sure whether all of the members would be in favor of another separate meeting, but if there's some time, maybe you could build in for like the May 12th meeting, if we could have some of that time to discuss the materials.
Sure, sure. Usually, at that point, that's when we're getting a lot of the feedback still, but absolutely, we could still discuss it, you know, and maybe have an optional meeting if anybody would like to attend, then we can add that as well for anybody that, you know, would like to share input. It might be a little smaller group, and we could really discuss any questions or thoughts.
Okay, I think that'll be good.
Great idea.
And Dr., I really like that suggestion, Dr. Dorsey, and with the members who are at the Curriculum Council meetings, you know, they go through and they read the proposed materials, and some of them vote and provide comments on them. Do you feel that there's sufficient amount of time for folks to review the materials and provide those votes? Because it's an awful lot of number of resources that we're looking at.
It is. It's like if we get an early start, if we get the materials early and delve into reading them, I think we have the time. I think the issue becomes if we put it off until closer to the deadline, and with it being so many materials, a lot of times, people might not have a chance to review everything.
Right.
So I think, you know, if we, as council members, review the materials earlier, but then again, if we have some time at the end of our review, when there are questions and concerns raised, you know, just to have the supervisors respond to those questions, I think would be helpful. So by the time we come to this Board meeting or to this Board to adopt the materials, even though there may have been questions, we can share, you know, how the issues have been resolved.
Okay. Yeah, I think it would be helpful to understand if there are other options. I think the resources tend to be presented as this is the option, either you approve it or we don't, but if there were maybe a better understanding of this particular resource is meant to address this particular item of the standards and, you know, whether there are other choices of, you know, whether there's option A, B, or C that we think would be the best resource.
Right, they do a great job of that. They certainly connect the materials to the standards that are being met, and even like with the language arts materials, sometimes they're just specific to certain schools and sometimes specific to the entire county, so we do get that kind of information. But again, it's just looking at the feedback that the members have and sort of reviewing that together and, you know, having supervisors respond.
Absolutely.
So thank you so much for saying you'll build in some time for that.
Absolutely, and, you know, what we could do is maybe at the May 12th meeting, which is our last meeting, talk about, but if we need additional time, we can always build in, you know, another date so that we would have more time. I don't wanna shortchange the discussion, you know, especially if we have a lot of questions or thoughts about it.
Okay, thank you.
And Dr. Dorsey, do you think that there's enough dots being connected after the fact? So once a resource is approved, that you see, what does a curriculum, what does a lesson plan off of that look like? You know, if this is the standard and this is the resource that we're using, how is the lesson plan kinda developed off of that?
Well, that's a part of the presentation. They pretty much present the material, you know, this is the standards, or these are the standards that are being met. They share how it's going to be used. You know, we don't see a specific lesson plan, but we have an idea of how it's going to be used in the lesson. So I don't know that there's necessarily a need to come back and take any closer look at that because the supervisors are recommending how the materials are to be used. I just think it would be good for committee members, you know, just to hear each other's feedback and respond because you might share that you have a concern with literature A and somebody else might look at it and say, "Well, gee, I thought that was just a really powerful piece to have in place for this specific group of students." So anyway, it's that kind of dialogue.
Sort of that dynamic discussion amongst committee members.
Just a recap of the review of all of the materials by the committee council members before it comes to this group.
Okay.
Thank you. Any more questions on any of the first eight items? Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Kyler, I did just want to make a statement. So we are having a work session about the strategic plan in September? I think it's in September? Or is that on the 31st, August 31st?
August 31st.
Okay, so I mean, it's coming up in the relatively near future. I would like the opportunity to, after we have those discussions with the strategic plan, to say whether we think that there were specific topics coming out of those discussions that we think would be well-handled by each one of the Board Appointed Committees if we would have the leeway to potentially add some topics at that point.
Yes, and I would just add to that, that on the 31st, we're having two work sessions. One is on school security, and the other one is on the southern area redistricting. So we are still in the process of setting up the one for the strategic plan.
The strategic plan, okay. Yeah, I just wanna keep that in the back of our minds, that there may be some discussions that come out of that that we would really like to have some of these committees address some of those items. Okay.
Okay, school construction report. Ms. McCabe?
This is the monthly construction report, which shares our progress on our two major projects and other summer work that we're undertaking. Mr. Prokop is available for any questions you may have.
Ms. Herbert?
First of all, how are we doing money-wise on both of these projects? Are we within our realm? I know prices keep going up on everything.
Yes, they do. We're, we are going to have to come to the Board with a budget adjustment for the Career and Tech, which is something we anticipated when we first started having the conversations when we did the value engineering analysis. So we know we're gonna have to make some adjustments there, but those were somewhat anticipated, or, I'm sorry, East. I was saying, I was saying.
You said Career and Tech.
But, yeah, but East. But we are, we're monitoring very closely, you know, we're just getting furniture shipments and getting a handle on the cost for furniture. Those costs are, have been, have been a bit of a surprise, so we're monitoring closely. We're okay now, but we are, you know, trying to hopefully take advantage of what appears to be some reduction in fuel costs and things like that. Maybe those things will help.
All right, well, the reason I ask that, because I know we don't have all the furniture for all the segments of the Career and Tech, and also, I know, you know, furniture's down the line for East Middle, so I was very concerned when we open up here in the near future for the first part, will all the furniture be there and will we be able to continue on with the furniture for the rest of the project? Are you all gonna have to come back and ask for more, or? I just know that I see dollars and cents everywhere, so...
To your first question, we're working with purchasing to, we're waiting on some deliveries. We're working with purchasing. They've assured us that we'll be here in time so we can open up the new phase, the new addition, fully outfitted. That's what our expectation is, that we will get delivery in time to be able to have that fully outfitted. But no, it's a little more difficult to say for certain what things are gonna look like as we go through subsequent phases, and for East in particular, we're looking, you know, at a year or so down the road before we have to even start to see that. So it's, we're hoping we're gonna see some reduction in those costs, but it's very hard to predict.
Because I know we allocated a lot more money for furniture for East Middle than Career and Tech. Am I, am I correct on that? Yeah, I think I am.
Oh, right, that's true. Yes, yes.
But I just know that things to replace in Career and Tech are a lot more expensive than buying desks and chairs for...
We could... We could, if you'd like, at the next board meeting, we could try to provide some sort of, in the construction report, a little bit more detailed analysis of where we stand from a budgetary standpoint that might help.
I, you know, I'm just concerned with the prices of everything, so.
We could provide that at the next meeting. That way you could see the detail and have it in front of you and ask whatever questions and we can answer them then.
All right, thanks, I appreciate that because I am concerned about money.
We are too.
And in your comments here, you talk about some of the phasing and some of the stuff sliding and moving classes and stuff. Is that all being worked out pretty well, you feel?
Yeah, it was, as noted, it was unforeseen circumstance. We won't get into all the detail of it. Nevertheless, Principal Donovan has worked well with us to find space and to bridge that timeframe. We're hoping that we can get some materials reworked and be able to get those folks moved back into their permanent space, October, November timeframe.
Board members, any other questions?
Yeah, I think that was going to be, my primary question was, so in the October, November timeframe is when you expect the last of those three programs to go into their permanent home?
That's correct.
And can I ask, what three programs is it?
Oh, I thought we had it listed, give me a sec. I may have it on another sheet. Yes, drafting, CTST and Makerspace, they're not, I guess, programs technically, but they're support spaces, so they have a little more flexibility. But the drafting program is the major one that needed to be.
Okay, okay, so this isn't going to be terribly disruptive or anything to start off in one location and then move.
There shouldn't be any impact to the instructional program. We worked it out where we're pretty comfortable that there won't be an impact.
Great.
Board members, anything else? And I assume we have no more public comments. So I need a motion for approval of personnel appointments.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Ms. McCabe.
So we are still in the time period where we are filling open positions from retirements or for those who have moved on to other positions in our system. First, tonight, we have Addison Beck, the Assistant Principal at Hampstead Elementary, to the Principal at Hampstead Elementary. Kristy Farver, Principal at Tonnytown Elementary, to Director of Elementary Schools. Julie Coontz, Secondary Special Education Consultant, to Acting Coordinator of Secondary Transition Special Education. Carl Stewart, Assistant Supervisor of Curriculum and Instruction for Fine Arts Curriculum and Instruction, to Supervisor of Curriculum and Instruction, Fine Arts. Tina Thoman, English Teacher at Manchester Valley High School, to Acting Assistant Principal at Manchester Valley High School. Hillary Warner, English Teacher at Winters Mill High School, to Assistant Principal at Francis Scott Key High School. And Christine Whittle, who is in our audience this evening, from Supervisor of Special Education, to Director of Special Education.
I have one question. At Man Valley, Tina Thoman, does that, does that now give you two assistants there or three? And you're still planning?
Right, so with Tina taking on the role of Acting Assistant Principal, that would be three assistant principals at Manchester Valley.
Which you've been talking about for a while and finally could get worked out.
Yes, we've been, we've been trying to get that third assistant principal back at Manchester Valley for a number of years now and we're very excited to be able to do that this evening.
Thank you. Board members, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I need a motion for the approval of personnel action items.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Mrs. McCabe.
We continue hiring and staffing for the upcoming school year. The monthly personnel action items include 50 new hires, six releases from contract, seven promotions, 19 leaves of absence, and several changes in FTE totals for staff.
Ms. Pataglia.
Real quick, I just wanted to touch on something that was said. All of our new hires, do they have teaching certificates?
Mr. Diaz, would you like to come to the podium?
Good evening, Superintendent McCabe and board members. The short answer to your question is that we have seen an increase in the number of teachers who are going to start their career with us conditionally certified this year. But I think it's worthwhile clarifying that when a person applies and they're being considered for a teaching position, in those scenarios, we're looking for at least a bachelor's degree, often in the area they're going to teach. They go through the same interview process as anyone else. If they do well, then they can be considered for hire with the same rights and responsibilities as a certificated teacher, but they're on a conditional certificate. And then it's on us as a school system to support them through that difficult first year, even if they were certificated, to have them proceed and be successful. So yes, there has been an increase in the number of individuals coming in conditionally certified.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we, do we have an idea of like what percentage of our, of our teachers are conditionally certificated rather than?
I can get that information for you, I don't have it right now, no.
Yeah, I've seen a number, but I can't remember. And I, like you say, it was an increase, but not alarming, I didn't think. But that's, that's me. Any other questions?
Did someone mention the number of vacancies that we still have?
Seven.
Seven.
So, yes, so the number of vacancies this time of year will fluctuate up and down in ones and twos. So it was seven. We're looking at about 14 right this minute, but this, these things change on a daily basis. So as we have administrative appointments, they create vacancies. You know, there are individuals who perhaps are changing, people moving. So this is on a daily basis, it fluctuates up and down. Considering when we look at other school systems nearby, we're in a good position. However, our team is working very, very hard, not only in the Department of Human Resources, but also in curriculum, school-based staff. It is a huge team effort to get everybody where they need to be.
And I'm glad you mentioned it was fluid. I think the seven came from maybe Carol Observer, some article, but it was accurate. But the week before it was 14 or 15, I think, or 13. And I know you guys have said it stays fluid through, through the first semester of school? When, when do you feel like you can relax?
Well, never.
Good answer.
However, that said, once, once we get into about early to mid-September, things have settled down. But our team always is working to fill certain positions all year long. But the heavy, heavy lift comes after the recruiting cycle, which gets us through the spring and then the hiring season, roughly speaking, from about May to the present with a spike at this time of year.
From a logistical standpoint, how do you, so let's say that we started the year with technically down 10 classroom teachers. How do you handle coverage for those, those particular classrooms?
So I can answer sort of from an HR perspective and, you know, some of my school-based colleagues might add some details here or there. But our schools have a variety of different tools and obviously they're looking at, in some cases, their permanent substitute in the building, who is able to cover that, other substitutes. But our school-based administrators and staff are quite good at planning ahead. They've been in touch with us. There are some surprise vacancies here and there, but generally it's a substitute teacher and often it's that permanent substitute.
Okay, okay.
What we are not planning to do is increase class sizes because we don't have a teacher hired for that classroom position.
Okay, and that's where I was headed with that question because I have spoken with administrators in other school systems that are struggling much more than we are, you know, down hundreds of teachers at this point. And they're actually talking about increasing class sizes to handle the situation. But we're not taking that route in any way here. That's certainly not our expectation.
No.
Board members, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I now need a motion for the award of bids.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Mrs. McCabe.
There are only two items on the award of bids tonight. The first one is an award for playground fiber for school playgrounds as needed. And the second one is emergency procurement for the roof repairs here at the Winchester Building, following the recent storm damage that we sustained. And we'll be working with our insurer and other agencies to cover as much of the cost as possible.
Don, are you up again?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, Ms. Sevigny, she was first.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to ask one question about the wood fiber. Since there was only one bid, is this relatively competitive to what we've seen in the past for similar bids?
It is, yes.
It is?
So it's one of those cases where you'd like more bidders, but we're okay with the outcome.
But we're okay with the outcome? It's not that this is significantly higher than bids had come in in the past?
Correct.
Okay, and I just wanted to make a comment on the second one of, that was a really rough situation and great job getting it handled as quickly as you did and all pulling together to get that storm damage situation handled.
So thank you. Lots of people, not me, but lots of people who responded to that very quickly and got it done. I even saw Mr. Kyler on the roof.
Yes, and, and I got backed down by myself.
That's right, I had to be lowered. Thank you for sharing that.
Ms. Pataglia.
No, I was just going to comment real quick about the wood fiber for the playgrounds. I mean, this is, do we know about like how many playgrounds this might cover throughout the county?
I believe most of them on a, on a normal annual basis. So the way I, the way by memory it works is they deliver X tons to a central location here and then as, as the principals and Ray's team assesses, it's delivered from a central location here to each school as needed.
Okay, and this is something we cover and not, like PTAs and PTAs don't raise money for this? This is something that we cover?
Correct.
Okay.
Board members, anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I now need a motion for the approval of the virtual day instruction plan for this school year.
Emmett.
Second?
I'll second.
Mrs. McCabe.
So last month, we brought for discussion a virtual day plan for this coming school year based on a new process and guidance from MSDE. You recall, our plan was to use a rolling virtual day for high schools on their graduation days and to have virtual instruction days for inclement weather days if and only if we exceed the snow days built into the calendar. The plan was submitted for public comment. We received about 160 responses, which were pretty evenly split, with slightly more in favor of the plan than not. The biggest concern expressed from our parents was that those who work would have a hard time being at home with their students for virtual inclement weather days if we get to that point.
Ms. Sevigny.
So Ms. McCabe, thank you for that summary. That was one of the things I was going to ask about was how we saw that falling. And again, like public feedback isn't meant to take a vote on an issue, but it's meant to understand what concerns and what issues do the public have? And can we potentially make adjustments to the policy to address some of those concerns, right? Like if it was something that we hadn't thought about. So I think the feedback came in probably where you would expect it to, kind of relatively evenly split, but there, there wasn't necessarily anything that was brought out. And I read all of them, but didn't really have a summary understanding of it. But there wasn't anything that we're proposing changing based on the feedback or we didn't have suggestions for changing things
No.
that were feasible to do.
No.
Dr. Dorsey.
Oh, I just wanted to thank you too for having it tallied for us because once you read so many, you sort of lose some track of, you know, which side is favoring, you know, more so than the others, so. But again, I remember reading about the working parents, how it does create a hardship for them and also for staff members, for teachers who have their children at home. It's a challenge to take care of their kids and get them online if they're of school age and to also be available for teaching their own classes.
Yeah, definitely.
Mrs. Herbert.
A couple of things. I know virtual is almost like a dirty word around here now and I get that. And number two, not everyone has internet capabilities. And I know Ms. McCabe has, you know, you would work with those families. But if you would ask a student, would you like to extend the school year? Or could you handle a virtual day? And I have asked students when I was out running around the fair, things like that, and they don't want to come back. And I will tell you, as a teacher, the more snow days you add at the end, it's not productive. I know that because they all look at the last day of school and then if you add on at the end, it, it, it just does, I mean, we, sometimes we have to do it, but I'm just down the earth and trying to be common sense. And I think if we'd have to do it for one or two days, that would be a lot better than that, even though I don't like virtual, rather than extending the school year because I know they're not going to be productive. I, I know that, so.
And I think that was Superintendent McCabe's thought in bringing this as the middle ground between all snow days being virtual or all snow days being snow days made up at the end of the year. So use the snow days and then if needed.
Yep.
But the comments were not, they were what you would have expected based on the past.
Absolutely, and, you know, and I'm, thanks for the 160 people that did, even though we have 24,000 students and I know it's not all the parents, but I thank those people for, for putting their comments there. And it does hit home on some of them that they don't have the internet and about work. But, and I think we could work with them and let them, you know, know, you know, ahead of time, you know, we're down to this day and this is what we might have to do, so. And we do, I think, a pretty good job of communicating with, with, with our families and the community already. So we just need to be on the positive end on that. And if Ms. McCabe would like to really do this, I think we need to vote for this for yes.
And just as a little reminder, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Just as a little reminder from the presentation last time, this new, the new guidelines from the state require, once you vote on whatever, whatever you approve, both Superintendent and the Board President have to sign it. It goes to MSD for review. If they approve it, it's done. If they have feedback that we have to work with, it would come back to you again one more time.
And I think, piggybacking both those comments, that the snow day is a good compromise. I think we'd be crazy to give up all snow days and make them all virtual. And, and nobody's really mentioned the graduation part. I think everybody was pretty happy about that. I think that's a good compromise. One of the things that concerns me is Carroll County still has a major internet problem. You guys ran around when we were virtual, getting people hotspots and doing everything else. And I don't know that the county is any better off than it was then. And there's a large majority that do not like virtual, both staff, students, families. And I just think this is a great compromise, I think we need to do it. But moving forward, we have to, we have to get back to where face-to-face in the classroom is it for, for our staff, for our students and for the families, I really think. Who was next? Okay, we'll just go across here, Ms. Pataglia.
I was going to say, prior to COVID, I remember I had talked about how I was invited to a middle school classroom at West Middle with Ms. McNue. And her kids had given a presentation about having virtual learning days for emergency purposes. And I remember talking about it because I thought it was like, hey, this is a good idea to start going forward, it's something we can look into. Of course, COVID happened and that was, and here we are. It is good to have, like you were saying too, we want to make sure we have those snow days or those emergency days so the kids can go out and play in the snow and do what they need to do. We can, I believe we can always make exceptions to the fact, yes, we know that a third grader probably is not going to log in. We understand that. But as an AP high school student, they more than likely will. You know, they're going to want to make sure their work is taken care of. So I think there's things that we can always look at and work on. And like you were saying about, you know, internet service, there's all, yes, we're still working on that in the county, but I think that's something we can still touch on is hotspots, especially with the computers that we are doing right now with sending out to students. The students are getting ready to pick them up with new orientations, making sure everything works and making sure, you know, again, administration's touching base with the child to make sure they have the internet access, accessibility to do their work at home. But, you know, this is something that's been proposed and talked about. But, you know, this is something that's been proposed and talked about prior to COVID, is having these snow virtual days so we don't have to make up so much in the end. Because it is something we hear from parents on too, is extending the school year.
Ms. Sevigny.
I just wanted to say, I think this is a really good compromise, right? Like, kind of considering all the different opinions and all the different situations. What I just want to make sure is that we don't sort of change the, from a snow day perspective, that we don't change the way that we evaluate a snow day, right? Like, you don't want to, just because we now have this as a fallback position that all of a sudden, where as soon as there's one flake of snow falling, that we're canceling school because we can make it a virtual day. I think as long as we're sort of true to the evaluation process and not placing an overburden on our parents and our staff members that have kids at home, that I think this will work out well.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Ms. Tedeschi.
Similar to what Ms. Herbert said, I think students do get overwhelmed or they lose that lack, they lack motivation when they see that school year get extended and families plan vacations and et cetera. But I think, I'm optimistic that because we have taken such a large break from virtual, that if we have this compromise of one or two virtual days, students may log in, excuse me. So, I do think now that, again, there's been that break, so we are used to it in person. If you would have said this when we were entirely virtual, I do think students would have just taken the day off. However, again, it's that compromise of just a few exceptions to this rule. So, I do think students could log in, especially, like you said, AP students or students with AP exams coming up, tests coming up, who have high expectations for themselves and their grades. And then I would also like to address, it says, a student who is marked present but does not complete or make up the required work will be coded as absent. How does that relate to a typical absent coding where you have one day to make up the work?
We had some conversation about that last month as well. I'll let Mr. Shockney.
Sure. We want to work with students on the reason why they may have missed, if it was a technology issue. We want to work with families and students to make sure they have ample time to make up the work. So, that's gonna be on a, probably a case-by-case basis that we work through that to make sure that we're allowing flexibility when it's warranted, but also accountability for our students as well because it is not a day off.
And will cameras on, mics on be what's considered present? Or how do we determine what is considered present?
I think the student engagement in the lesson, the teachers will be able to know if students are engaging or not into the lesson as well. And then also too, for our graduation days, keep in mind, we know those are coming. So, that's very easy to plan for a student that we know may have a technology access issue. We can plan for that through an appropriate pencil or paper task or assignment as part of that as well.
Thank you.
Because I'm hearing we're not gonna have a very nice winter. I'm hearing it's gonna be nasty.
Mrs. Herbert.
Mr. Kyler, you have work to do. You need to fix the internet problem.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I don't think that was a question.
And the weather is really Mike Hardesty's responsibility.
A board member, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I now need a motion for the approval of the Carroll County Health Department contract for vision and hearing screening.
So moved.
So moved. I'll second.
Mrs. McCabe.
This is the annual contract with the Carroll County Health Department to provide vision and hearing screening for students for the coming school year as required by law. Ms. Gomes is here, if anyone has any questions.
Any questions, board members?
No, it's just a good service that's provided.
Yes. And I think August is National Eye Vision Doctor's Appointment Month, I believe, yes. I believe that's another thing in August. Yeah. So, go get your eyes checked, everybody.
If no other questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I now need a motion for approval before and after school childcare leases.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Annually, we bring for your approval the lease agreements for before and after care in the elementary schools. There are two schools with new providers this year. As a reminder, childcare providers are selected by the school community working with the school principal. Mr. Prokop coordinates the lease agreements, which apply a formula that includes the number of students, days, and square footage being used.
Ms. Sevigny.
I did just go back to last year's quote, and it was actually a little bit higher last year, even though there's now additional facilities this year. So, I was just curious if there was a change to the square footage cost or are we getting a...
Not to the cost. It's, it depends on the licensure, whatever license the provider gets, allows them a certain number of students, and the square footage that we allow is based on the number of students. So, it just...
Okay.
If the participation is less at a school, it's gonna pull the number down.
Okay. So, this must mean that there's maybe a little bit less participation in the schools than there was last year
Overall.
through that calculation?
Right.
Okay. And is there a specific reason that we don't have these services in either Robert Moton or Tawnytown Elementary School?
Those are just business decisions that the providers attempt to start up programs in those schools. But if they don't work out and over time, it's a losing proposition. They just don't re-up.
Okay. So, it's not necessarily that we don't need those, there isn't a need for those services. We just don't have a provider that's willing to provide it.
Right. And we also have Boys and Girls Club programs and other programs that some of our students in the other schools can utilize that maybe don't have, especially an after-school program.
Okay.
Ms. Pataglia.
If a parent wanted to find out about putting their child in any of these programs for the before or after school at their child's school, how do they go about? Do they just contact the principal? Do they need to contact the provider themselves?
Well, the principal has the contact information, but the agreement is between the parent and the provider. We provide the space through the contract for, the contracts you're approving are for the space only. But, so the agreement is between the parent and the provider. And the contact information is available at the school. We certainly have it here, but easiest just to get it from the school.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I now need a motion for the approval of the Carroll County Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee.
So moved.
I'll second.
So, as noted earlier, this is the annual meeting where the board approves the membership for each of the board-appointed committees. So, the next eight items are the individual councils, which will need you to approve them one at a time.
So, any questions on special education? Ms. Sevigny.
So, Ms. McCabe, I just did notice, I think I counted correctly, but maybe not. I think we're missing two elementary schools and two middle schools with representatives from list to list. Are we, are we still trying to find representatives from those schools?
Yes. We are actively, those principals are still looking for parent representatives. So, as we get those, we'll make sure that they get updated to the distribution list and they become part of it. But principals work hard to find a match, but occasionally, they struggle to find a parent representative. But they do persevere and they'll keep looking until they find someone.
Okay. Great.
Any other questions? Ms. Pataglia? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I now need a motion for the approval of the Carroll County Community Advisory Council membership. Second?
I'll second that.
You don't need to say anything each one. Any discussion? Ms. Sevigny.
So, similar question as for the Special Education Committee. But we're missing a few schools, but this is much better participation than we've typically seen in the past. And I'm not noticing, in a lot of cases for the CAC, in the past, we would have school system employees as a lot of the representatives, and that does not appear to be the case anymore. So, we're making some really good headway in terms of getting parent representatives from each school. But I think there might have been one or two schools that we're missing.
All schools are represented and all schools have a representative.
Okay, great. I guess I miscounted on that one then.
Ms. Pataglia.
If we had a question regarding a parent that was recommended for a school, do we just need to talk to someone about that if we have questions or concerns regarding it?
You can just let me know.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I need a motion for the Security Advisory Council membership.
Send it.
Second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Ms. Tedeschi.
I was just curious about the selection process for the student member on this committee, please.
Good evening. So, currently, we do not have a student representative.
I'm sorry, I misspoke. My apologies. Disregard.
That was a setup.
Ms. Pataglia.
Did we want to have discussion who potentially would like to be the board member for the Security Advisory Council?
Well, there you go.
Will you take me? I wouldn't be, I technically, excuse me. I know I didn't attend very well during virtual because I just, that's not me. I like to be in person, so.
Gladly.
Ms. Herbert, do you mind if I'm backup in the event?
Okay. Nobody has an issue with Mrs. Herbert and Tarby in the backup?
If they do, it's all right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I now need a motion for the Carroll County Career and Tech Education Local Advisory Council membership.
So moved.
Ms. Pat, I'll do second.
Any discussion? This is a committee that I was the board representative. You were on it some.
As backup, yeah.
Yes. And I'm, as Mrs. Herbert so eloquently put it, in a couple of months, I'm gone. So, I think somebody else should be put on that.
I don't mind.
Are you okay, Ms. Pataglia? She was served on it. She was at meetings, maybe not this year, but the past year a fair amount. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I need a motion for the approval of the Curriculum Council membership.
So moved. I'll second. I'll second.
Mrs. Herbert.
I have a question. Whoops. I have a question. I need a definition or why, what is the difference between 7K and 7N? What are their duties? What's the difference between the Carroll County Curriculum Council membership and the Carroll County Curriculum and Instructional membership? What's, what's the difference? And why do we have two?
Well, I mean, I think, well, because we formed the second one. This K is the original curriculum council.
Yeah, N is a relatively new committee.
Not this one.
No, not this one.
K is the original.
Yeah, K is the original. N was added with multiple board members. Both of you were on it.
Yes. But is it necessary, I'm just throwing this out. I don't know if this is appropriate time or not, but is it necessary to have two curriculum committees?
Well, the second one is more of an informational discussion with staff members. So, with board member, you know, kind of giving some viewpoints and asking a lot of questions kind of about curricular topics. Like, so this is where we discuss things like the Ag...
I didn't know if it was just overlapping, that's all.
We discussed about like the Ag programs and esports and the foreign languages program that was brought to the group last year. Just a bunch, just making sure that things were moving along. And if the curriculum folks wanted some guidance from board members, we could just say, oh, yeah, we think that that's a great idea. You should bring that to the board or maybe this one needs to go back to the drawing board a little bit. Those kind of come, those kind of...
The reason I brought this up was because if a parent sees this, this looks like a duplicate. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It does. It looks like it's a duplicate. That's why, that's why I asked the question. Do we need both? Okay.
I'm not sure, honestly, was, so the new one, the N, was that, is that a board appoint, that's not really a board-appointed committee?
No.
I thought we just formed that last year.
We did form it last year, but I wasn't, was it a board, I was trying to remember whether it was a board-appointed committee. It was, okay.
We functioned in that capacity.
Okay.
Okay, so...
That's why I asked.
Yeah, yes. No, makes sense. So, back to K. Is there any question about that membership? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. L. Need a motion for the approval of the Carroll County Teacher Advisory Council membership.
Send it.
Second?
I'll second.
Any questions? Ms. Sevigny.
I did just have some questions because there are a lot of TDS on here.
To be determined, ma'am. We're still working to form members on this committee. The to be determined are members who have cycled off because after their three-year term. So, we are actively working to make sure we have a very full representative committee.
Okay. Since I'm the board representative on that committee, I've been copied on a lot of the emails that have gone out requesting folks to join this group. So, are we having trouble having people accept that or is it just a timing issue?
It's a timing issue with some transition. This one's on me, so.
Oh, gotcha. Gotcha. Okay.
To be honest.
But you don't anticipate there being any issues?
Great committee again. I just need a little bit more time to put all the pieces of the puzzle together.
Okay, that's great because this is, I've always been incredibly impressed with this group. So, excited to continue working with them.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I now need a motion for the approval of the Family Life Advisory Committee membership.
Send it.
Second?
I'll second.
And I'll just add here, before you vote, that these members were all appointed last year for a two-year term. So, really, all you're doing right now is reaffirming the membership.
Okay. And I assume if a situation changes for a member and they can't, then they'll be replaced and filled in.
Yeah, and I think that was something that the committee said that we needed to address because there were some of these folks that didn't come last year to several of the meetings. And so, we might have to find some additional representatives to take their places. Once we find out whether they're coming to attend.
Yes, yes, it's a financial issue.
Right.
Ms. Tedeschi.
Let's try this again. How is the student member selected for this process or for this committee, excuse me?
The Family Life, my understanding is they were selected through the Board of Education. And so, most of the members were through board appointments.
Is the student member selected by their principal or is there a certain curriculum that they, like, do they have to take Health 2 or...
Yes. They have been in Health 1 and they're actually taking Health 2 at this point.
Perfect. Thank you. And then also, do the student member also have a two-year term or is they, or are they only one year?
They have a two-year because it's Health 1 and Health 2 at this point. So, we were hoping that the insight, they would be able to provide insight to both.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And I believe the student had, the student member also applied.
Yes.
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 Yes, we had the application database last year and there were a couple of students that applied. And then we were, so, and anyone who was interested certainly had the ability to put their name into that.
We also added at the request an elementary teacher because we'll begin to look at some of the elementary curriculum in the future to provide changes. So, we did add an elementary teacher as well.
Okay. Is that, is that Ms. Hunter Mark?
Yes. Correct. Yes. She is actually a health teacher at William Winchester.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's fantastic.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I now need a motion for the approval of the Carroll County Curriculum Instructional Committee membership.
Send it.
Second?
I'll second.
And this is, I'm sorry.
So, are parents on this too?
No.
No.
Okay. All right.
No, what we, all it's been is when we had met.
And you meet every month?
It was every month.
It was every month and then towards the end of last year, went to every other month.
Okay.
And it was basic, just pieces of different curriculum was brought and said, this is what is being...
what is being introduced or coming down the pipeline that might have to be changed. Mr. Stockney, you've done a couple of them with us.
Yeah, there's, if you know, there's only one topic on there, and that is just a summary of our ELO and, and ESY and compensatory progress, but the, the topics can be determined by the team, so I'll make staff available as directed and as requested for presentations based upon what the, what the committee and the board would like to, to see.
And I know last year, I think there was a couple presentations, like, we had just kind of said it was like the foreign languages, things of that magnitude, that, you know, we asked like, hey, show this to the board, so I think the board would be interested to know how this is going.
And, and I think when the committee was set up, the, the staff was, who, who was in that position at that time?
Right.
And, and like you said, if, if you need to draw extra people for a certain topic, they, they have the ability to do that, so I guess the biggest question is, are Tara and Donna interested in continuing on that committee?
I am.
I'm fine with continuing on that. I, I think it was also an interesting meeting where we allowed for citizen participation at that meeting as well on specific curricular questions that people might have, and, and we had a couple of parents that came in and asked questions over time, and also the, a CCEA representative who had asked a couple of questions and, and how that might impact teachers, and, and I think it was, you know, pretty good discussions without having to take up significant amount of time, you know, they would, they would only be bringing presentations to the board that.
Yes, yes.
That they knew that we were interested in, and.
Yes. Yeah, it was, and, and again, if I remember right, we can't have three board members on it.
Correct.
Because that would be a, a meeting, and so we have the maximum we can put on it, so they can get into it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I now need a motion for approval of O-line Board of Soccer Officials contract.
Submit.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Ms. McCabe?
This is the annual contract to provide officials for all home varsity and JV soccer games, and Mr. Duffy is here for any questions.
Come on, board member, somebody, somebody's got to test him here.
All right. Got to make it worth your while for being here, right?
You all don't want to talk to me?
Is this the same, or?
Yes, ma'am.
It's the same?
Same.
Now, how about like football officials and the hockey officials, are they all pretty much the same?
All of our officials' associations for this fall are exactly the same as they were last fall.
Oh, okay, so they weren't inflated, that's good. It went to seven percent.
Well, the prices, the, the prices have increased, but the associations are the same.
Okay.
Any other questions?
We're not immune to inflation either.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I now need a motion for the approval of the MABes Legal Services Association dues.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
This is the approval of the annual dues for membership in MABes, and MAB dues structure is tiered based on the size of our school system's student population.
Clearly, this was not immune to inflationary increases either.
Right.
I like the nine dollars.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And lastly, the, I need a motion for the approval of the MAB dues.
Oh, different one, the legal services.
Legal services should have been first, and then dues should have been second.
Yeah, we did the legal and approved it. Now, so now it's a dues.
Mm-hmm.
Did I get a motion?
It'd be 7Q.
Did I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
I, I don't think we had the title of it right.
Oh, okay.
When we sent it, so I will make a motion to approve the Legal Services Association annual dues.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll second.
I need discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Discussion, Community Advisory Council.
So, last month, we determined that we would set aside some time on this agenda for board members to discuss topics and items that you'd like to consider assigning for the Citizens Advisory Council for review. This is open for your discussion, and any items that are arrived at, Ms. Gaddis will provide to the CAC. One item that's already going to be a continuing item on their CAC agenda will be any item that goes out for public comment, so when we receive our public comment, we will also receive a special report from Ms. Gaddis on how, what the CAC's thoughts were on whatever went out.
Okay.
For that public comment, so that will, I'm certain that that will keep them busy and talking about some really important things that we have going on in our school system, but besides that, you can have this time to talk about any other item that you wish for them to address this school year.
Ms. Vigna?
I, I like that idea of anything that we send out for public comment, that they would give a specific comment from the committee, I'm curious as to how that works from a timing perspective, because the committee does not meet on a monthly basis.
The committee traditionally has met three or four times a year, we're going to be meeting every other month, and we've discussed the fact that if the board has something that's out for public feedback and the committee is not meeting, then we'll do it through email and electronically.
Okay, so we would still have a formal opinion?
Absolutely.
From the CAC as a whole?
Yes.
And I would like to, to state about the, the strategic plan, I think that there might be some significant things coming out of that discussion, and Ms. Lucido did confirm for me that the meeting for the strategic plan is October 3rd, so anything that might be coming out of those discussions, I think it would be important to have the CAC address some, some of those items.
Ms. Pataglia?
Now, I know CAC has a meeting come up in September, I think that'll be a good meeting, definitely want to have that one, with getting back to school and everything, just to kind of like get, get a vibe from the community members as to what they're hearing and seeing, as certain things that could be additional topics later.
Right, and we've invited Mrs. McCabe to come and speak to the group for the first meeting. Wonderful. And I'm happy to hear that.
Any other comments on CAC?
The group has also expressed an interest in security, they have a lot of security questions, so we're going to have a presentation for that, so that would get us through the first two meetings
Okay.
of the year.
Would that, we, we're also having a work session
Yes, on that.
At the end of August, so would the discussions with the CAC include some of the items that, that we discussed at the workshop?
Yes, we can do that.
Okay, great.
Any other discussion? And again, I assume there's no more citizen participation?
No, that's about, um.
That's right, that's right, that's right, that's, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It's all mine, he has.
That's our discussion of citizen participation.
He's retired now, he's tired.
I tell you, I, I got off a plane at midnight last night, I am sorry.
Last month, we, we shared that we would have a discussion at this meeting regarding the process and procedures for citizens' participation, we've had many speakers at recent meetings, often waiting outside with staff, doing their best to support prospective speakers, and to bring folks in and out of the boardroom based on available seating. We wanted to offer suggestions on ways that may streamline the process for citizens' participation, allow everyone the same access or opportunity, and perhaps better organize the process when there are many people in attendance who would like to speak.
And so what would the process be to, to, for us to follow through with that?
So the process would be a digital sign-up that would be available via our website. If we have folks in the community who do not want to sign up that way, or, or have trouble with internet access, they could call our communications office and sign up that way. After the digital sign-up, which would be open the day before the board meeting, then speakers would be contacted the day of the board meeting before noon, letting them know that they were selected to speak that evening. Those who aren't selected would also be, would also be called or contacted so that they know they were not selected to speak at the meeting that evening. We would have a total of 15 available slots. And basically, the guidelines would be very similar to the guidelines that we've been using for the past couple of months. The only major change would be that citizens would be able to speak on, on topics that were directly related to an agenda item for that evening's public meeting. As usual, the, the superintendent and the board reserve the right to correct misinformation, but it's not intended to be a question-answer session. The board reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on a particular topic so that all topics are represented at the meeting. And then, as we always expect, those in the audience are expected to be respectful of those who are at the podium speaking, those at the podium are asked to address the dais and not those in the audience.
And then, do you feel you're able to put that in writing, put it out, we'd have public comment until our next meeting in September, and then the board could vote on it?
Right. So we'll have public comment on this all month, and then at the September meeting, we'll bring this back for a vote after you have seen the public comment and, and had a chance to reflect on that, and then if approved, this would go into effect for the October board meeting, and there's also the chance that you might want to change, just revise something, but still change the process, and, and we could do that at the September board meeting.
Ms. Vigna?
I guess that's one of the, the questions that I have, is, we need to, because we do have a citizen participation at board meetings policy, B, D, H, you know, we're, we're looking to revise it just to make sure it's consistent with how we're doing this going forward, but under the policy statement, there, there's a lot of detail here about exactly what the process will look like, I'm wondering if it makes sense just to make it maybe a little less specific from a process perspective, just if we find that logistically some things don't work quite as well, that we don't have to actually make a policy change to say, okay, well, you know, it's going to be open two days prior to a board meeting, or, you know, if maybe we're, that's just my only suggestion, is maybe it would be better to make it a little bit less specific from a process perspective, but still getting the gist of what we're trying to, you know, the, the approach that we're trying to use.
Yeah, I like that, okay.
Yeah, so, so the two of you are saying, try to condense the policy a little bit so we can tweak things without having to change the policy itself.
Right.
Right.
Yes.
Right, it's still, you know, giving people advance notice, still giving them a way to sign up, still making it available prior, you know, with certain amount of notice prior to the meeting, but not so terribly specific that if logistically we need to make a change, that we would have to make a policy change.
And, and we want and encourage public comment, but it's, it's gotten cumbersome, and this doesn't negate the right to email, send something in writing, and comment in other ways. Mrs. Herbert?
We definitely need to get a handle on this. We are not out there, but we hear yelling, back and forth, and it's very disruptive, you know, and I know we've heard stories of people grabbing each other's blue cards and ripping them up, and circus-like atmosphere out there, that needs to stop. We need to be, this needs to be an orderly process, and it's not fair for Mr. Curtis Pierce back there to have to referee parents on who's fighting over a blue card, that is absolutely ridiculous, and we are adults, and we should act like adults, and the students should be respectful also, not grabbing cards out of each other's hands, calling each other names, and we need to clean this up, that's all I need to say.
Any, any other comments or discussion?
Just one other comment about, under the policy statement, where we're adding the, where their children attend school, I think we probably want to make a, just a caveat on that, that that doesn't mean that you must have children in the school system in order to come and speak at, at public comment. You know, we, we encourage any citizen, you know, if it's grandparents, aunts and uncles, interested parties, that anybody can really still come and speak, whether they have children in a, in a school.
But, but whether they are grandparents' parents, or have no children, or what, what level of school can be a good indication for us, but, but they don't have to have.
They don't have to have kids in the school system in order for the.
Right.
Right, but, and, and I don't, like, if, if a parent is hesitant to say where their kids go to school, I don't think we want to require it, but we do, we do encourage it, because that can help us address a situation that they, that they might be talking about, like, if, if we understand, you know, if there's a specific school that there's.
Well, yeah, we'll make those changes before we send it out.
Okay.
And again, the bottom line, as you're saying, is that we still certainly want to hear from the public.
Absolutely.
We're just trying to organize it a little bit, because again, you know, it really is taking at least an hour, in this case, if we have 15, it'll be taking the 45 minutes out of the meetings, so again, we do want to hear from the public, so I hope everyone gets that message, and the bottom line is that if you cannot speak at the board meeting, certainly, please email us and, and share your, your information that way.
Yes, and there will also be a new place on our website where you go to sign up to speak at the board meeting, there will also be a button to be able to just upload a thought, or an opinion, or an expression that will be placed on our website.
Superintendent McCabe, is that place on the website where you can add a thought or expression, is that separate from all of our emails, because I know it goes to our emails, obviously, I just, I think if we start restricting the public comments in person, the emails are going to flood in, so is that spot on the website a separate entity?
Yes, it's a separate place. Great question.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, I think I'm back. Unfinished business, new business. Ms. Pataglia?
I just wanted to touch base real quick, two things, the bring your own device policy, we're just kind of reiterating that into our schools right now, regarding, with administration and the back to schools, they're just, they're just kind of going over that with them, everybody? Okay, because I know that was something I, I'd heard from some teachers, that they had concerns going into the new school year, that that was a lot of the behavior issues was because of the devices on the desks, so I just wanted to kind of touch base on that.
Yes, principals are, are going over those kinds of issues with teachers as they come back, so that our students are focused on their learning, you know, we, we don't want students using their phones during class, we want them focused on the teacher and focused on the lesson at hand.
Okay, and my second question was, I had heard from some parents, they were having some difficulty regarding getting into home access, also, you know, when you have to go in and fill out the form, they don't know their child's email, so they're like, well, I can't go any further, what am I supposed to do, so I, should they call the school, or they, should they contact Central Office Tech Services?
The school.
Contact the school, okay, all right, so parents, there you go, if you have problems with home access, contact your child's school, all right, sounds good, thank you.
Can I just ask a, a follow-up question on the BYOD policy? Is there, we haven't looked at that recently, and clearly, the world has changed since that policy was written, does it make sense to bring that back, just to take a, just to take a look at it at the next board meeting?
Sure.
There could potentially be some things in there that really need to be addressed or changed.
Yeah, we can have that for discussion for next time.
Okay, great.
Any other, new business? Unfinished business? Let me see, I might need help with this. Wednesday, August 31st, the work session on school security, that is now 3:30.
Actually, that'll be, it'll be most likely at 3:15, and we'll be sending out a new notice for that.
Okay, 3:15.
Mm-hmm.
And then, on the same day, August 31st, at 5:00. And then, on the same day, August 31st, 5:00 PM is a work session on the Southern Area Redistricting Committee. And then, 5:00 PM on Wednesday, September 14th, is a board meeting with citizen participation in the boardroom here. And then, October 3rd, there is a strategic plan work session, and there'd be a notice sent out, and I'm not sure if that was to be at 3:00 or 3:30. I had it that day, and I had it both times. 3:30, so that is at 3:30. I'm almost back.
And on August 31st, we're having a 3 o'clock board meeting, right?
A very short, board meeting.
Yes, a notice will be sent out for a board meeting just for the purpose on August 31st for administrative appointments, personnel appointments. That'll be at 3:00, and then we'll start with the first work session at 3:15.
We're fluid. Do I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.